See? It's working. Hey, everybody. Hey, there's loads of seats up front here. So folks at the back, we can't remove the sidewalls. So if you want to be comfortable, there's plenty of seats up front. And if you're sort of sitting either side of a couple of seats and making people feel awkward to squeeze past you, maybe just move a seat along and make some space at the outside. The front row version can't be that strong. I mean. Closer to the front you are, the more likely you are to get some of the leftover swag at the end. So, you know, good reason. Okay. Could we get the screen up, please? Brilliant. All right, hello, everybody. Oh, my gosh. Here we are at the end of four days. That was wonderful. We're now going to have our town hall meeting. And let me just, I just want to sort of tell you what we're going to do and the time that we've got, in the time that we've got. So the first part is going to be, I'm going to do a little report, a retrospective on behalf of the general chairs and the diversity, equity and inclusion chairs, with Min doing the DEI part. And then Chateau will be giving a sort of a brief account from the perspective of the executive committee. And then we'll open up for questions. We've got someone taking notes and we're also, we're recording the whole session. What we're going to do is we're going to try to splice the recording right after my bit finishes. That's then going to be used in the online version of the town hall, which will be happening later tonight. But we'll make sure that we've got a recording of the whole discussion as well, which will be able to play back through Hoppin. So anyone who wants to kind of see it will be able to see it. Okay, so let's just start by looking again at the people who made this all happen. And I really want to just highlight all of the often kind of invisible labour that goes into putting on a conference like this. I mean, they've been wonderful, there's been wonderful visible labour too, the local, the local chairs, the local everybody. I just would like everyone to join me in a massive round of applause for all of our hosts. So these, this is the visible work. Easily the best food I've ever had at a conference and pretty reasonably priced too. But there's been a lot, there's a lot of folks who couldn't come, who were not able to come because of either visas or flights or other things they had to do, whose work went into making this all happen. One person I'd really like to single out is Irene Nandutu, our webmaster. She's done a wonderful job for at least the last two years. Yeah. We really, really wanted her to be here and just couldn't quite get it sorted right at the end. But hopefully she'll be there next year and everyone can thank her in person. Okay. Let's just talk a little bit about what we, what we sort of saw when we were asked to take this on last year, like what the challenge was of putting on a conference kind of during the pandemic, after its sort of first major sort of waves. I think everybody realised that, you know, there were some definite benefits to shifting to remote participation in conferences. It really did make it more inclusive and accessible for people who couldn't travel. And also for people who just had other obligations that made it hard for them to do so. So we wanted to find a way to enable that, to enable that kind of online participation, but also to renew in-person contact. There's loads of people here for whom this is their first in-person conference. And it is a really important part of, of being, being a scholar, being a researcher, being an activist. Like the fact is that here, right now, we have everybody's attention oriented around one thing. And that's an incredibly powerful thing. And, you know, no, no platform can enable that really. Like everyone always, if it's on your computer, it's always going to be at your own time. So this is a really valuable thing to do, but we wanted to try and manage those two goals. We then also had to plan under many layers of uncertainty, like a sort of, you know, each time one seems to be resolved, another one pops up. There was Delta, then there was Omicron, the war in Ukraine, the closure of Russian airspace, visas. We thought we got there and we were like, oh, they've removed the restrictions on getting into South Korea. You know, it's, there's no quarantine now. We thought we were, we were, we were home free. And then it was like, if you need a visa and you're not from, you know, if you're not from a rich country, then you, it was really hard. And again, like the local chairs, the whole local secretariat did loads of work communicating directly with individual consulates, like sending tailored letters to individual consulates around the world, many of which had slightly different policies from one another in order to help people get visas. We also knew in advance that there would be a certain kind of skew of in-person attendance, you know, like the logical thing. What I, what I was predicting was that you'd get people who sort of have fewer obligations and more resources and would be more likely to travel, and which, which has broadly been true. But what I didn't anticipate was that it would also skew towards the, the younger folks in our community, which as you'll see, has certain economic implications, which I didn't anticipate, but which I think we're okay. But like, it would have helped for me to have predicted that. Okay, so what was new? This is the first fact in Asia. We had a big focus on voices from the Asia-Pacific. I mean, it's been run by our local chair, who initially said she only wanted to be local chair, but has been definitely massively our general chair, you know, by, by Alice and by me. I'm from Australia and obviously Charles is the, the last general chair. So we had focus on voices from the Asia-Pacific in the content as well. You know, from here, from India, from the Philippines, from Australia. It's the first hybrid fact, like we had an online one last year and a new one this year. And we decided to use a different platform rather than the kind of hodgepodge of things we had last year. This year, we integrated craft in the tutorials into the programme throughout. Like we didn't have a sort of, you know, the first couple of days are craft and tutorials and doctoral, and then the research proceedings. We hope people liked that. I certainly liked it. There was, I just wanted to get to as many of those as I could. We expanded the travel scholarship scheme, again, knowing that there was going to be this problem of if you're more resources and you have fewer obligations, you're more likely to travel. I think we could all infer who are the people who have more resources and have fewer obligations. So we really wanted to focus on using the fund, the money that we could raise in order to direct it towards getting people here who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford to do so. We also had a cool new couple of schemes, the diversity, equity and inclusion scholars and our community keynote. And this actually came about through the good offices of the ACM and last year's general chairs, William Isaac and Madeleine Elish, who basically they raised more money than they spent online because they raised money for an in-person conference, but did an online conference. And the ACM allowed us all, sort of awarded us a special project request, which was sort of equivalent to the money that they sent back last year. And so we were able to put that into this year's conference. I'll tell you exactly how much in a minute. Some lessons that we learnt from 2021. So one thing that was great, a really good innovation was to make some of the organising committee roles two-year roles and sort of have them staggered. So you've got some continuity from one year to the next. The hardest thing with a, with an institution like this is when you have, naturally you have turnover. Someone does the role and then they're like, well, I don't do that again for, you know. But like, it does mean that you, you lose some institutional memory. So this really good innovation of having people carry over their work from last year. So Deb Raji, our publicity chair, for example, who's done a wonderful job, has played that role. And, you know, then Annette Zimmerman steps in and she'll be able to continue next year all being well. We saw the value of transcription of plenary sessions. We also learnt the, and sort of took on the lesson about let's not rely on AI for that. And so we used live transcription for our plenary sessions. We did a lot in terms of participate, support for participation from developing countries. We reinstituted the caring and bandwidth grants from last year. We had a lot of help from last year's general chairs. So Madeline and William are not here, but their, their work, like their advice throughout was really, really important. So just for their behalf, because I hope we'll see this, let's give them a big round of applause too. All right. So the money. I have to say it's non-final because we don't actually control the money. The money sits with ACM and we sort of authorise expenses and such. So it's, you know, we'll only know precisely what we spent. We know what our income is. We only know precisely what we spent when we get the final kind of closeout of the, of the budget. But here's our income. This is where that point I made about there being loads of PhD students sort of came to bite me in my financial expectations. I thought that we were going to make $200,000 more in registration, but I also left a big, we left a big leeway. So it was like, we're going to be okay, as we'll see. But that's our registration income. The sponsorship, which I'm going to break down on the next slide, was $365,000. And there's the special project fund of $223,000. On the right hand side, you see the expenses. Putting on an in-person conference costs a tonne, like the conference centre, the venue charges an enormous amount. You know, rightly, that's, that's, you know, I'm not complaining or anything, but it is a lot. Catering is a lot, even though it's, you know, we went for affordable choice options. I want to sort of draw your attention to the fact that the costs of streaming an in-person conference are also really high. So the platform itself is, is, you know, is quite expensive. But actually providing sort of really decent quality video of the in-person conference for that, making sure that everything is streamed. It actually is a lot, it's both a lot of kind of labour in terms of getting stuff up, but it's also a significant expense. I think that we've had a sort of sense in the past that like, well, if it's an online conference, it's not very expensive. So you think registrations can be really low. But actually it does, it does cost an awful lot to kind of do, do the two. You'll see there the travel support and accessibility grants, it's about 190,000. I mean, many of the invited speakers were people for the crafts and tutorials, who were sort of also, the, the goal there was one of inclusion and participation. We didn't buy a lot of business class flights. I think we bought one, you know, which I think is just good in principle. And we, you know, we'll talk a bit more about the DEI scholars and community keynote. Folks probably don't know about the way in which these conferences work. I was certainly surprised to see that there's this fee, I think it's like 15%, that you pay to Sigat, to, to the ACM in order to have the conference. It looks like a lot of money. I would just sort of remind you that like, they wear all of the risk. So if we had really badly miscalculated on the cost of the conference, they would have just absorbed the, the cost there. So, you know, it looks like a lot in the, in the round, but it's, they do wear the risk. So at the moment, I think we're probably more or less roughly going to break even. You know, we have a contingency built into the budget and we've used all that. You can see there, well, but we don't need any more contingency now, you know? I mean, that's, it's over now. And, and, and Chateau tells me that the cost, 720 per attendee on average, is consistent with previous editions, which is, you know, that's encouraging, especially considering we have done the two parts of the conference, right? We've done the online as well. All right. So sponsors. So as you know, we have a new sponsorship policy. So every sponsor on here has been approved by the steering committee. We know, we have, it plans to sort of revise the sponsorship policy. It was a first pass. We're really happy, I think Chateau will talk about this, to consult on it, to take people's opinions. This is, for this year, we had a vote within the steering committee on each person who want, each company that wanted to sponsor us. These are the ones that were approved. You'll see that no company goes above 25% of the proportion of funding. Obviously, our primary four sponsors there are DeepMind, Luminate, Sony and Amazon. And there's a sort of bimodal thing, the other, the others are all a fair amount lower, looking at you, Microsoft. You told me not to say that, but you know. But yeah, and it covered about 47% of our 2022 expenses. As you know, our sponsorship money is never earmarked. We have that thing where we say like, you know, today's lunch is sponsored by. That's some, that's part of what we sort of, you know, the, the package we offer to sponsors. We say we'll do that. It's not like the money literally goes to buy that thing. We have a pot of money, we use that for all of the conference expenses. The way to look at it really is think about the stuff on this expensive sheet, the stuff that you absolutely have to have in order to run a conference, right? You can't do without the venue, you can't do without catering. In this case, you can't do without streaming, you can't do without the online platform and transcription. You can't do without event, event management and project support. So everything below that is the stuff where, you know, you're like, the amount of money that you have determines what you can do. Above that, it's all stuff that you've just got to do anyway. So if you can't make enough money to do that, then you can't have a conference. So all that stuff below, the invited speakers, the travel support and accessibility grants, the DEI scholars and community keynote, those are all the things that we're able to do because we have these, these reserves of, of resources. And a massive shout out to our sponsorship chairs there, Michael Exton, who's done it for his second year now, and Shell Adamson, who's done it for the first year. So good job, you guys. And thank you to the companies and the foundations that sponsored us. Okay, so let's look a little bit at registrations. So we're slightly down from last year. The number in total is 1,091, as against 1,328 last year. The number of students has gone right up, 632 as against 192. I'm really pleased with that. That's, that's very exciting to me. And then you can see the rest. Our Cvent, our registration form, we didn't get very good country data. So our country data here is from IP address when people have logged into Hoppin. It's not brilliant, I don't think it's super accurate. But you can see roughly, this is, these are the top countries. I'm going to come, you don't need to see that. So people did start putting up their time zones. So this is actually data that people entered themselves. So you can see sort of a distribution. I mean, like what I would take away from that is that time zone equity matters. Like it really is important to, if we're going to put these conferences on, to find ways of reaching people around the world if it's going to be inclusive. You can see here the sort of the distribution around the world, like usual sort of situation. But it's fewer than half from North America, certainly of the registrations. And then, you know, clustered around sort of Northern Europe, Australia, India. These are the countries where we're seeing most of the registrations. A lot of our efforts to sort of focus on, to bring people in from China, like I was saying earlier, were just really thwarted by the pandemic. One of our program chairs was going to be in, in Shanghai for the last six months as a visiting professor there. And she got COVID right before she was going to fly there. And so that whole trip was cancelled. So we would have had a program chair based out of China, who would have helped sort of spread the word there. I'm sure we'd have had many more people coming over from China if it was possible for them to leave the country. So, you know, that I think has been a, just something we could do nothing about unfortunately. But definitely, as Karen How was saying this morning, something that we could really, we should keep trying, whatever it might be. You know, hopefully the controls around COVID won't last forever. So the online platform, this is, we sent out, everyone who registered plus a bunch of speakers got sent an invitation to join the platform. 931 people actually clicked that link, which is good, you know? I mean, some of them after being asked to like 10 times, but you know, it's still, it's still a result. So far, this, as I, when I took this a day, you see the average time on platform there was 15 hours. It's not brilliant data because some people just leave a browser open, so who knows? But it's, it's still something. And the attendee score as of sort of midday today was 8.7. So shows a certain level of satisfaction with the platform. It was nine the day before, and I think maybe the fact that we had a bunch of people get their sort of time wrong for their tutorials overnight might have led to that little rating decline. You can see the active attendees there. So the, the line in the middle, that's, that's 200. So it's sort of gone up and down around 200 at any given time. Pretty consistent, dropping down a little bit overnight here. So clearly quite a lot of people in the conference are actually on the online platform. I actually was quite a lot, not just to see if it was working, but it was pretty cool being able to have the slides on my computer and sort of, you know, leave comments in the chat stuff. I really liked that. Okay, so I'm going to take you through some of the components, give you a bit of detail about that. We're going to do this quite quickly. So we had 110 students in the doctoral consortium. Still don't know why it's called a consortium rather than a colloquium, but you know, we'll, we'll keep going with that. 24 countries, a large number from the US, the UK and Netherlands. And we had sessions that focused on interdisciplinary communication, mentoring and peer discussion. The craft and tutorials programme, we knew we had a sort of big shoes to fill from last year. There were some amazing programmes, a lot of, a lot of really strong support for what was done in craft last year. We had the added sort of complication though of, you know, it's, it's, people, people were leery of planning to travel for something like this. If you think about when we were deciding, making all of these decisions, it was when there was still a huge amount of uncertainty. So we did a lot of sort of focusing on people who are able to travel, funding them to travel, making sure that they are able to do it. And focusing on people from the region who are going to speak to, speak to issues around the region of the Asia-Pacific, but also from civil society organisations in the US. So from the ACLU, from the Green Lightning Institute. And, you know, we're, we're really happy with the, the mix of disciplines in the tutorials. So, you know, we had some areas that I think are fairly new for, for this audience. So kind of, you know, media studies, philosophy, political science were well represented, as well as sort of specific areas within CS and policy. The thematic focus of the craft workshops again, voices from the Asia-Pacific. And then I think worker-centred research and practice, labour organising, practical reflections on ethics work in tech. There was a lot around that. And like I said, we used a lot of resources to kind of make that part of the programme come together, especially for the in-person crowd. And we had massive participation in the online crafts as well. That seems to have gone really well. The next kind of big element of the programme, the sort of the new thing for us was the community, community keynote. I really want, I hope this continues next year. I really want like you all to sort of see this as an opportunity. I think we had a wonderful first demonstration of what it was that we were trying to achieve with the community keynote. You know, to do high quality, high production value video that addresses factory such issues and draws on voices that wouldn't otherwise get a prominent position on the stage at FAK. And it'd be wonderful if people would follow in the footsteps of Dan and Willie and Wuneda and, and Danny and Drew and Vanessa with their keynote on bargaining with a black box. And like, I don't know, I mean, again, I think one of the things we tried to do there was take that and build on it. Like we had the panel discussion that set up the ideas, or some of the ideas around bossware and algorithmic management. We had the community keynote and then we had the craft to try and sort of give people a sense of how to take these ideas and put them into practice. And it would be lovely to see that sort of approach persist. Okay, so we're now going to switch to talking about our specifically focused on diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives. So Min, and by the way, so Min Kung Lee and Maria Diartiaga, who could not be here, both did a massive job, both in like in many, many stages, in planning, in handling people's travel support, in helping people with their visas. So again, I'm going to ask you to vote to welcome Min and to thank Maria.
Okay. Thank you first. So this year, we are very excited to introduce a new DEI programme called DEI Scholars. So we are very grateful that we were able to support four projects that seeks to deepen our collective understanding of DEI and FAK community. So we have Maria Goldstein and Raj Roscoe, who's looking at how to improve demographic data collection practices to capture different people's identities better. Lauren Thomas Quingley, who's exploring intersectional tech identities and how that impacts the scholarship at FAK. Emet Tafise, how she's exploring how BIPOC people engage with the AI Essex related conferences. And finally, Solida Bagnon, who's looking at the experience of people in hybrid conference model. And the, all these scholars actually new to the FAK community, meaning they haven't been coming to the FAK or don't have a papers at the, at the FAK conference yet. So it would be great if you can welcome these scholars into our community. And in fact, the Emet is a attendee, has been attending the conference. She's sitting, she was sitting over there in a yellow skirt. So if you can say hi and congratulate her, that would be great. So these scholars will conduct research for the next six months to a year. And in fact, they're actually also recruiting participants for their research. Like Emet is recruiting participant for her interviews to understand the experiences. And also Solida is recruiting participant on the FAK Slack, just she couldn't come to the conference. So if you have time, it would be great if you can share experiences with these scholars. Just to note, FAK is independent of this research. These scholars is independently conducting this research and FAK doesn't have anything to do with the data collection or collected data or publication of the result. I'll also go over a brief summary of the continued, continuing other initiatives. So we expended the DEI initiatives greatly this year, spending more than 250,000 US dollars in total. So in addition to DEI scholar, we had a travel grant that supported 109 already to be able to travel for in-person conference. And there was continued to be bandwidth and CARE grant, CARE grant. And I think I pressed the wrong key. Oh, okay. Oh, finally, we also support, offer tier registration prices to support different roles, ranging from like students to industry partners. And also we have a discount rate for people from economically developing countries. And this year too, we had a registration grant. So we offer like 160 free registration, mostly for students, for others who are coming from nonprofit or don't have any other funding support.
Thank you, Min. Yeah, so our biggest challenge was definitely visas, no two ways around it. All right, so I'm just going to run through a little bit on the proceedings. We've got the two, two of the programme chairs are in tonight. So Frederick and I believe Christian is somewhere. So just wave and these guys had a huge job to do as well as Michael and Angela. When we saw the number of pre-registered abstracts that there were and that it was over 1,000, I think everyone basically kind of shat their pants. But it's, you know, it ended up being like 707 papers and then, you know, 30 odd were desk rejected for not being non-anonymous or whatever. So 687 papers to review, three reviews per paper. You guys do the math, it's a lot. So these are the trends in the proceedings over the last few years. You can see it's growing significantly, the numbers submitted. The proportion accepted remains roughly the same. So, you know, that's, you know, one thing that you'll have to, we'll have to think about as a community is if, if we keep growing like this, you know, again, attention becomes the scarce resource. So it may be necessary to think about having posters, for example, or, or other, other ways of kind of managing the, kind of the attention shortage that results from having so many papers being submitted. In terms of the distribution of papers around different topics, I haven't got any kind of, any data from last year about this. These are the tracks that you can see on the, on the left-hand side of the chart of the table. You know, it's a, it's a pretty solid distribution. You know, you've got sort of 80 papers out of 181 that are in data and algorithm evaluation or algorithm development. You've got roughly the same in social sciences through historical and cultural critiques. And then, you know, sort of 20 in the middle of human factors, which I suppose are in some sense kind of in between CS and the non-CS disciplines or span them. Actually, in the, in the longer version of the slides, which I'll put up on, on Hoppin, I also kind of broke it down by self-reported discipline, which is slightly different from the tracks because it allows people to kind of put in multiple disciplines per paper. That's kind of interesting too. The acceptance rate remained sort of roughly the same across the different, different areas. Historical and cultural critique seem to do pretty well. But there you can see that like the, I think the aspiration for this to be an interdisciplinary conference, whilst also being a credentialing conference in computer science. I don't know what else you could do but have something like this. This looks to me like a really good kind of model for that, if that's the goal. And like I say there, I don't have any data for the desk rejected papers because we deleted them from Easy Chair, so they no longer exist. All right, so Christian gave us these reflections from the programme chairs. So the new platform was Easy Chair as opposed to a hot CRP, had some benefits in particular around privacy, had some costs in terms of user functionality, user experience. One of the, like, can I ask, how many people in this room have received an email from Jake Stone? That's a lot of hands. Yeah, so, so one of the things that made that all work was our project officer Jake Stone, who has helped throughout the conference, but was crucial to getting your papers reviewed and finished. Like he, he handled all that part of the platform, was sending out all those emails. You don't actually know, but he was sending all the emails that you received as authors from Easy Chair. So a quick thanks to Jake as well. So norms of interdisciplinary review remain challenging. You know, I think there was an aspiration to have a sort of, some kind of special committee look at that last year. That, that aspiration is probably still a good one. Bidding across tracks went well, it was a lot of labour. And Christian wanted us to thank the area chairs and the programme committee for all of their hard work as well. So not getting tired, let's do one more. Okay. All right, so our reflections. So, you know, it's been wonderful working with Alice, Alice and Charles over the last 12 months really. And it's involved a lot of like, kind of early morning for me, late evening, late afternoon for you guys. And even earlier morning for Alice and our hour or two hours before me. And it's been an extraordinary experience, you know? I mean, Alice Shang is a, is an old hand with FAK, but Charles and Alice O and me, we're all pretty new with it. So it's been a wonderful learning experience, I think, for all of us. We have some reflections that you might want to take forward and that this community might think about for the future. We tried this year to really maintain a full experience for both the online and the in-person audience. It might be that that's too ambitious, especially regarding costs. We were lucky this year, we had that extra money from ACM from last year. But in another year, it might prove challenging to, to raise enough funds to support that. The visa issue was also a real barrier to, to participation for folks from, from developing countries. And there's obviously the issue around emissions, you know, and the, the carbon cost of having in-person conferences. At the same time, the in-person conference is wonderful. We wondered whether it might be a good idea to alternate. We wondered whether it might be a good idea to alternate, to have something that is focused on, it's remote only one year and then something that's in-person only another year. And there's loads of loads of sort of reasons for and against either side. But it's worth putting that out there as an option that people may not have thought of. You know, we'd love to figure out ways to encourage growth and submissions from non-CS disciplines over the long term, while continuing to attract high-quality CS research. Obviously, it's one of the central kind of tensions for FAK and it'll always be a challenge. Don't think we've resolved it at all. But it's, it's something to keep considering. We're really pleased with the community keynote. That was just a, first for me, it was a personal highlight. And I'd love to see that continue. I think it has, has real potential for this community. There have been some really strong calls for actions in, in papers submitted to this year's FAK. You know, I must say, I hadn't, I hadn't read them until I saw the presentations. You know, as general chair, I wasn't going into the papers beforehand. You know, when I did read them, I kind of felt like there were ways in which both the proceedings and the conference as a whole was kind of responding to some of those concerns. You know, it's up to you to determine whether that's true, but certainly I kind of felt like we were on the same page. So I hope that's true. As to how we move forward, you know, one thing that we didn't have a very kind of, we didn't, I mean, getting the papers reviewed in time was, was hard and there wasn't a lot of opportunity for innovation. And I think that we do need to work a bit more on ethical review of papers. You know, there have been some calls for sort of stating red lines around what we will or won't accept. But I think that that's so hard to sort of decide that upfront in a way that people can, reasonable people can agree upon. But you do still need to have like thoughtful ethical review of these papers. We have a space for it in the review, in the review, in the reviewers questionnaire. But it wasn't really used very much. And I think people don't really have the training to do it. So I think that's something to reflect on is how can we make that really work? We want to sort of just highlight the fact that we really, we've really valued the kind of pluralism of the conference. The space that there has been for productive disagreement and I think agonistic dissensus was a, was a phrase that was used in one of the talks. That for me feels like it's happening and it feels like it's really valuable and, you know, I, I'm sure we'll have more of that when we switch over to Q and A and discussion. One thing that we thought might be useful is like having seen the way in which we threaded together the, the community keynote, the panel and the craft session there. We wondered whether there might, it might be possible to have more space within the conference for kind of, you know, working together on a sort of, you know, a project proposal or a paper proposal, some idea like actually doing research together with the people that you meet or planning research together with the people that you meet at the conference, like a little, a bit of time for that might be really good. I have to acknowledge both the contribution and energy from the 600 and odd PhD students who came, but the student volunteers who have been wonderful. Okay, these guys, I mean, it, there have been times where if you're running a conference, it's basically going 21 out of 24 hours. It's just not possible to have everybody on it all the time. And there have been moments where the more senior folk might have been missed an alarm or whatever. And this, and the volunteers, especially the senior volunteers have done a job. So the, the senior volunteers who are here, there's some swag for you at the front to come up and get at the end. And then other volunteers, there'll be some after that as well. So please do come and get some of that as a, as a thank you from us for all that you've done. The volunteer chairs who organized them were absolutely wonderful. Arastha and Stephen, don't clap all at once. I'm going to give you the last few. The virtual chairs, Haywun, Damian and Catherine. Haywun has been everywhere. He has been an absolute Superman. Jin Young as well, who has done the same sort of popping up, when you've had people pop up and you've not been able to get your slides work. Nine times out of 10, it's been those two guys. And I wanted to really warmly thank Chato for being here and for being like such a wonderful guide over the last 12 months. All of the executive committee just worked tirelessly and just with incredible kind of thought and heart that they put into this. And like every time we had a question where we needed to sort of, we didn't know what we were doing, basically. We were able to draw on their expertise. So thank you so much, Chato. So to all those people, massive thank you. All right, so what I need to do now is I need to exit this part. Chato's going to come up in a second. I need to stop the recording so we can clip it and send it to the other people. It will just take me a moment. Chato, you can come up, mate. Oh, look at that. Okay, so people online, I'm leaving, but I'm coming back. An easier way to make it, like break up a recording. Okay, so hopefully. Not that one. It's not working as well as before, but. No, it stopped, it stopped streaming. Actually, no, this, this part doesn't need to stream. Okay.
Yeah, but do you have the? That one?
Ah, no, the other one to the left. I'm sorry, we had it all set up beautifully. Jin Young, go. Hey, Jin Young.
Thank you. So I will try to be brief because we really want to hear from people in the, in the audience, right? So I have, I will try first start, of course, with our infinite gratitude to the organizers of the conference as we heard. And FAK 2022 has been very challenging as a hybrid conference, like it's the effort of an online conference plus the effort of an in-person conference. But I think it has also been very rewarding for us. It has given us this beautiful opportunity to meet face to face with colleagues and people that we appreciate in, in our own discipline or adjacent disciplines, to have this serendipity of having new connections over a coffee break or a lunch. And, and for many of us, that it's the first time in, in South Korea, like had been like the possibility of discovering like a city full of energy, right? So our conference aims to be this big tent for a very diverse group of people that are involved in this research area. This is all we want to do. It, it sounds more, it sounds easy, but it's actually quite, quite complex to maintain like this, this big tent, but where we can gather around and perhaps the role of the executive committee is to ensure that the needs of the different people that come under these tents are, are served. And, and to continue listening to what are these needs and to try to continue having this place where we can have these, these discussions, these productive discussions, even between people who come from completely different viewpoints, right? So I want to talk to you briefly about the structure of how we organize the conference because this allows to be more precise also in the feedback that, that, that we receive and in the possibilities that there are for this conference. So there are, we have some bylaws that define the structure of the conference. There is an executive committee currently made by five researchers and our job is to maintain the tent. And then the steering committee is 53 people. Most of them are researchers and they provide input, they approve key decisions and they form these working groups. You can find the entire list in the FAK conference page and their organization. And every year, the executive committee and the steering committee appoints two to four researchers to organize one edition of the conference and they work during an entire year. And of course, this is very exhausting. Now to make it more in the form of a diagram, the, the, the central portion is the steering committee, which is 53 members. Around 11 of them are from industry, one is nonprofit, the other, almost 40 are from academia. And they form a selections committee that accepts nominations and self-nominations. This is something that's going to start briefly after this conference. So we are looking for more people to integrate the steering committee with a particular focus on people who come from a civic society organization, advocacy organizations and so on. From the steering committee, we draw the executive committee that lasts for about two years. Currently is five members. Three academics, one person with double academic and industry affiliation and one industry affiliation. And we appoint general chairs and diversity and inclusion chairs with the approval of the steering committee and these people form the steering committee back again. Right? So they, but the intake is our these nominations and self-nomination process for entering the steering committee. The current executive committee is, well, myself, I, I work for the ICRA, which is a government institution at Universitat Pompeu Faro, a university. Elisa Selis, Alexander Shuldehova, Michael Exa and Madeline Elish. So they, all of these people have been, most of them have had like some role. I was the general chair in Barcelona. Elisa was a program committee chair in 2020, also in Barcelona. Alexandra was a program chair in 2019. So it's people who have had the experience of organizing this conference and does then know what it takes to, 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 to run it. So we have eight strategic goals and I want to read them briefly for you. They were approved in, in 2019 and they are like the foundations of this tent, right? So we want to be this top-tier publication venue. We want to be an interdisciplinary conference with some, with focus in computing system. We want to be open-minded about the different topics without compromising the focus. We want to be the de-conference in ACM that innovates and leads in terms of diversity and inclusion, maintaining independence of government, governance. We want to grow, but responsibly and respect the gravity of this research topic and more importantly, to avoid being an island. These are the foundations of this tent that we are building. Now, FAK is the fifth conference in the series, including the FAK Star Conference. It's the first year that we don't have any of the original FAK ML founders on the executive committee. And we are trying to, really hard to find a sustainable funding model. Now, as Seth highlighted, our funding is tied to each edition of the conference. So we start the, every calendar year with the, an empty budget, like with zero money. And then we, during the year, we collect the sponsorship and we spend it in the conference and at the end of the year, ACM like takes all the pace for all the potential debts and takes all the liability and also absorbs like any remaining funds. So I'm very grateful that this year was very efficient in breaking even. Now, we have an interim policy for sponsorship. So we voted each sponsor, the steering committee voted for each sponsor. But we are working on, on a more permanent sponsoring policy, which we also will require your input. And we are trying to navigate the, the community perspectives and trying to understand that within our communities, there are very diverse, even opposing theories of change. And we, we want to still maintain a tent where everybody feels welcome. We have critical self-reflections. Seth also spoke about this. We have four projects of people who are, are just starting to be part of our community funded by the, by FAK to study diversity, equity and inclusion. We have at these three papers that we are reflecting critically about FAK. And, and we appreciate that this very, very strong research effort and very, the, the collection of evidence that help, help us like understand how to better serve the community. We are going to send a survey to all the attendees. Normally, the response rate of the survey is very low and we will really appreciate, very low for my taste. But I will really appreciate if you could answer the survey when, when you receive the link. We want to continue receiving your feedback and we have had some meetings with the communities within FAK. And, and if you, if you have a sub-community and you feel that your interests need to be better reflected here, please ask us and we can have a meeting with your community. In this year, we institute this detailed funding disclosure modeled after medical journals, after, unmotivated by a petition by some community members. We recommended it for 2022, but we are going to require for 2023 with this detailed funding disclosure that explains the role of funders into, in funding agencies into every aspect of the research. We as executive committee members also disclose our individual funding sources for the past years. You can find those on the website and we want to continue and expand the scholarships and the community keynote programs, which also for me are part of the, the highlights of this year. Our ongoing work as, as executive committee is focused right now on the sponsorship and the sponsorship policy. The sponsorship makes these things, many of these things possible, but has to advance our strategic goals. So the sponsorship has to be something that advances our strategic goals, not something that goes against them. Last year, we declined one sponsor. This year, we declined some sponsors through, through voting of the, of the steering committee, but we need to have something, we're, we're, we're working on something more permanent. Like Mirel Hildebrand and Solo Barokas, they were the two steering committee members who volunteered to take, to propose a sponsorship policy to the steering committee for reviewing and ratification. A couple more areas in which we want to work. One is the ethic, ethics review, what kind of processes are needed in research, what kind of guidance we can provide for reviewers, to, for authors. How, how should we update this guidance every year? These are, these are questions that we are working on and, and particularly like something related to governance. So, so how, how can representatives or advocates for those affected by algorithms be part of our organization? Maybe they cannot be part with the current structure and we need newer structures to, to support that participation. How will those structures look like? We also want to prevent a misrepresentation of the science that is presented at FAK, particularly with respect to existing products and services. So retroactively, we have added the disclaimer to all the lists of accepted papers at FAK. Maybe we need to do more on, on that, but we, we are trying to be very clear that FAK is not an auditing organization and the peer review process is not intended to certify that a product or service is is something that fulfills said certain criteria. The peer review is never supposed to, to do that. And, and some, some, we're trying to prevent and also react to, to misrepresentation. But that requires some policy. And we, we will continue working on this sponsorship policy, planning future conferences and, and continue the, this leadership. Now, the FAK community needs you. The steering committee will be open for nominations shortly after the conference. We want to diversify the steering committee. And there will be various roles that be open to organize FAK 2023. I know there is a lot of exhaustion of service, like I know that there are people burnt out, there are so. But for you, for those of you to have cycles and to have the, the passion and the possibility and the energy to volunteer for these positions, I would really appreciate your help. Every year, we open even a forum where people can, can nominate this and say, I want to help in, in, in the FAK conference, then we can talk about how, how can you help, help us organize the next conference. So our tentative plans follow more or less what, what had been said that it's very difficult and very expensive and very, and perhaps not sustainable to do a hybrid conference every year. The current plan pending approval by the steering committee is to have the next conference be online. And then the conference after that to be hybrid with, in Latin America, but also with the possibility of attending online. And your input on this is also very welcome. Now, coming, now we come back to the part where we, we go back to the part where we hear you. I think we have 15 minutes for, for any feedback that you have. These are some topics, but you can give us feedback about anything you want. So there is something we do in community organizations in Barcelona when we agree with something people say, instead of clapping, which interrupts the speaker, what we do is that we do silent clap, which is to show support. So if you hear anything that you agree with, please like show your support in this silent clap. And it's perfectly fine if you're dissatisfied with something and you don't have a solution, right? But if you want to change something, tell us what is the need or the dissatisfaction behind. So and with that, we hear you, like, we would love to hear your feedback, comments, questions, needs, dissatisfactions, anything.
Hello, everyone. My name's David. This is my first FAK. I'm from Carnegie Mellon. And I just want to say thank you. This has been a wonderful experience, great meeting everyone and thanks for being so welcoming to a newcomer. With that, I want to reflect on corporate capture, particularly the themes in Meg's talk. Excellent talk. And the framing of this as a big tent and asking just how big we want this tent to be. I think in, I mean, we all agree that was a really good reflexive sort of criticism, self-critical sort of discussion, but I think that talking in specifics helped translate talk to action. And Elaine's comment yesterday in the same session, that maybe there are just some tech we should not build. And maybe we should try and agree on those. And maybe then do something about it. So I'd like to talk about those signs that were, we saw at lunch yesterday. And, and so talking about specifics, yesterday's lunch brought to you by Amazon. There's no such thing as a free lunch. I am a graduate student, so I love free lunch, but still, there's a reason, there's a reason why lunch is free. And I know it's a, a big pot, but still, the wider comment about sort of corporate sponsorship at FAK still stands, I believe. So in addition to providing cloud funding or cloud services for immigration and customs enforcement, which helps, which that agency helps separate kids from their families at the US border. They also build and deploy algorithmic management and materially affecting the life chances of their warehouse workers. So, and affecting their, their life chances precarious, in their precarious wage work. So, do we agree, as Elaine asked, that this is tech that should just not be built or not provided or not used? And if so, what does that mean for our sponsorship policy, for the way we think about not only sort of the influence of non-directed research funding, but particularly for the sponsorship policy and for how, how big we really do want our tent to be here? And if we can't agree on that, yeah, so what, what do we do about it in those lines? But if we can't agree on it, what does that say about how big we want this tent to be? What does that say about us if we can't agree that algorithmic management of lowly paid workers isn't something we can agree is bad? Or, you know, how, again, how many different views we want and under that big tent? So thank you. And I mainly address this to the room because I think that, I mean, I don't want to put them on the spot. I think this is something we have to talk about. So thank you.
Thanks for the people.
I have a separate question.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Cool, hi. My name is Rishab. I'm applied, I'm working at DeepMind on some applied research, doing nothing related to fairness work. And I've sort of noticed that there's very few of people like me here who don't, are not working in anything related to FACT work. And I was wondering what your thoughts on that, if that's good or bad? I can see how it can be good because you have experts talking to experts and you don't want to dilute the conversation. Even this question is maybe diluting the conversation. Sorry, I'm nervous. But maybe you also want people like me to learn about FACT topics. So, yeah.
Thanks for being here.
Hi. I wish I could limit myself to one question, but I really want to ask two. So if you end up dropping one, I understand that. The first question is, you know, again, thank you for having this conference here. I really do think that there needs to be continued focus on, you know, bringing, like centering or adding to perspectives outside of Europe and North America. I think that this is an issue that we need to continue to focus on. So I guess my curious, my question is, what next steps do you have to encourage that and to keep that going? I think there's a lot we can still do. And then my next question, additional question is, while I really do appreciate this conference, as a machine learning researcher who's primarily bread and butter is machine learning research, I do have some concerns about how do we ensure that the work that we do ends up affecting how machine learning research is done? And does not stay within our own little community and really affects change? So I'm really curious about what your thoughts on making sure that a public paper that is published in FACT ends up getting read by researchers who aren't necessarily working on ethics?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily. And I'm going to respond a little bit to that because I think that that point was just brought up. I come from a research nonprofit and a number of really great people here. This is my first time here. And the reason I came was because of the tutorial offering. I do write papers in my job, but it's not necessarily a big part of my job. And so having an opportunity in a forum where I could bring a lot of problems that I've been having and like meet with all of you here who attended that session and provided feedback was so helpful for me. And I see that as a really great opportunity. Like I regularly engage in questions with people in government and with people in NGOs and people in nonprofits who would not necessarily come to this conference because they see it as a CS conference. They see it as a research conference rather than as an opportunity to interface with many of you here who have done a lot of really deep research in this space. So I just want to amplify how helpful I found the tutorial type of track for work like this, where I don't have a paper to write, I don't have findings, but I really appreciated having the opportunity to chat. So relative to how to expand the big tent, I think raising awareness beyond the research community of these opportunities, really, it also like made me feel comfortable to come and present. So just an idea.
Thank you.
Hi, hello, I'm Doug. I had a similar sort of genre of comments as well. There's like a related conference emo and they've had like a practitioners track or just something. And I know NACL also now has sort of like an industry or practitioners track, which is really not necessarily for researchers, but for those that are adjacent to the field and would benefit from connecting with researchers and with students that have the sort of technical expertise. And actually, like this is a room full of people that would be great, like expert witnesses and great collaborators and other ways with policy folks and those that are not necessarily going to come to FACT or benefit from, or even, you know, directly with impacted communities and, you know, those that are on the ground and experiencing things as we saw with the community keynote. So, yeah, it would be interesting to see how FACT could facilitate a space where you don't necessarily have to come in, you know, benefiting from having your name on a paper, but also benefiting from connecting with those that have the expertise to do this kind of work and sort of soliciting that kind of participation in addition to the participation of students and researchers. And then I had a sort of second point as well about, I noticed, because I went to a kind of wide range of, you know, I guess paper sessions across various tracks. And I noticed that there were sort of these like motifs in certain communities. So let's say like the sort of critical scholarship having certain motifs and then the technical scholarship having certain sort of repeated ideas, but not necessarily connecting to each other in any direct way. So it felt like everyone was sort of in their lane, talking to each other and having ideas that they all agreed on, but not actually communicating across disciplines. So I'm not sure what mechanism we can establish so that individuals can communicate across disciplines and actually speak to each other. I know just being in the same conference is, you know, one way, like no one is, you know, forcing you to only go to the CS track sessions. But if there was some mechanism for that dialogue to be more explicit, I think that that would be really helpful. Translation tutorials are already an opportunity, but it would be interesting to have other ways for that interaction to happen.
I just wanted to respond to that really quickly. This is my first year at FACT and I actually assumed that the organizers were trying to force us to cross-pollinate because it seemed like all the XAI sessions were on at exactly the same time. And I wanted to go to all of them, but I could only pick one and had to get a whole bunch of different sessions, which I thought was great. So thanks.
James Foltz here, UMC. So I'm picking up on the same thread of interdisciplinarity. So it's really great, we're trying to do a big tent here. But, you know, interdisciplinary work is not the same as siloed work from different disciplines at the same conference, right? So really truly interdisciplinary work is really hard and getting through peer review even harder, almost impossible. And at this community, this is still a problem. I mean, it's a problem across the board. And so any way we could make that better? I mean, there's simple things you could do, mention it in the reviewing guidelines, right? Say it's really hard to do interdisciplinary work, we support it. Another thing is to think about the tracks and how they make silos. Then maybe think about how you could maybe have an alternative track for truly multidisciplinary work or something like that. So something to think about. Thank you.
So I want to respond to a couple of points. So one is like, like FACT Conference produces a number of artifacts for self-learning also, right? The tutorials, like the talks, the keynotes, the community keynote. Everything is recorded and is part of our intention is to produce these like, these resources that are available for the community for learning purposes, particularly for people from, that are not in the FACT community, but want to learn about FACT topics. Now, regarding research, a couple of points. One is that we want to understand better like how to expand our definition of what is research? Because it's research, research is not only academic research, but there are many advocacy organizations that do some research. And we would like to have a space for that type of advocacy oriented research or somehow like we need to frame it properly in our next edition. And the way in which we influence like computer sciences, computer scientists and developers in machine learning is by having excellent scholars, like influential scholars in computer science, top scholars in computer science, influential scholars in law and social sciences and humanities in our program committee. Like their presence in our program committee, in our senior roles as program chairs, that allows us to have that influence over like the rest of the CS community. That's my little comment here. Please, Emily.
Hi, I'm Emily Black. I'm just finishing up my PhD at CMU. I just wanted to say thank you and thanks to everyone. It's been so lovely. My just quick comment is that I think that it's really important to have an in-person component every year. I think that there's something really magical about coming together. My life was changed by FACT, my career was changed by FACT. Coming here as a second year graduate student in 2019 and then now as I'm entering into early faculty, it's really, this place is a place where I feel a home and B like a place where I can always find someone to have a new idea and make a new connection. And I think that that's really important, especially probably for students and early career faculty. So I would just beg you to do anything you can to have it be in person, some component in person every year. Thanks so much.
Hi, my name is Isru Dova. Thank you all so much for the huge work and accomplishment with this fantastic event. I want to single out the ways in which you've done, gone out of your way to bring other perspectives here and especially those from communities, community keynote. But we've also seen many other people representing people on the ground, being subjected to systems, documenting different forms of algorithmic harm that really helps sensitize this community. And I wanted to sort of raise an idea to see if, more of a question with one idea, just could we maybe see if FACT could be, have broader strategic partnerships with other organizations that are good at representing those? Potentially, you could think about co-locating the conference with something like RightsCon or something else. I'm not a super expert in those spaces, but I could see that really what we want more of is these sort of random encounters of our people, especially those that are new and that sort of could really benefit from that kind of sensitization. So that's just a question and maybe something to think about and discuss more.
Thank you so much for organizing this conference. I just wanted to thank you for organizing the doctoral colloquium. I actually sort of suffered from starting my PhD when the pandemic hit. And I, this is my first sort of, you know, in-person conference after a while. So I really appreciate it and I would also echo that comment that it would be great to have that going for young, especially young scholars. But I also, one thing about interdisciplinary conversation, what I really enjoyed about the doctoral colloquium was the fact that there was a conversation between a philosopher and a computer scientist. And we could see this live dialogue about how they would think about collaborating. And after doing interdisciplinary work for a while, this was one of the first times where I could actually see a very explicit focus on this topic. And I really, like I really, really appreciated that. So I was thinking, one of the other conferences that I also really like is V-Robot. And there they have a format where they discuss them for every paper and they will actually ask questions about the, to the author and discuss the paper instead of like presenting the paper. And I think that format could be really interesting to have this interdisciplinary dialogue. So I just wanted to sort of raise that for everybody and thank you again. Yeah.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Lizzie Kumar at Brown University. I'm a, I just finished my third year of my PhD. I want to echo and maybe add on to what Emily said. We met at FACT in Barcelona and had a really great time. And this conference also changed my life. And I can't remember a thing that happened last year. I'm not going to lie, I don't remember anything that happened except for my interactions in the virtual doctoral consortium, which was, which was great. But what was I going to say? Oh yeah, I wanted to sort of maybe add on to the fact that, you know, I love meeting other PhD students. And I think that's such an important reason why we come here. However, as you noticed, it was really heavily weighted towards junior researchers here. And I think one of the major benefits of going to a conference in person in the first place is to meet senior scholars, you know, potential mentors and connect with those people as well. And not as much of an opportunity to do that this year. You know, pros and cons to that. But I think, you know, if we are going to have an in-person conference and acknowledge how valuable that is, like how do we incentivize those mentors to show up? Because they'd, if there's a fully online component parallel, they don't have to come. So I just wanted to point that out.
Hi, I'm Larry. I work at Google, which means that Google in some sense sponsors my life. This, you know, accepting that kind of sponsorship has come with pretty serious ethical decisions on my part. I think there's lots of problems with Google. I think there's lots of great things with Google. One of the things that has allowed me to make that decision and the positive is that it allows me to do the interdisciplinary kind of work that I otherwise really can't find a place in the world to be able to do. And then also that it allows me to not just be like a channel of Google, but me. So even though a lot of people probably don't feel comfortable speaking like, kind of as a person, not their employer here, I think it's important to set the precedent. And, you know, the nice thing about Google, or one of the nice things for you all is they have a ridiculous amount of money. And so like if we're having challenges with things like, like how do we find funded in-person conference, which is, you know, I also think quite important. I would really love for there to be some way that you find it to be kind of ethical to allow, you know, these institutions that at least I think try to care some. Some might, you know, try to look like they're caring, some might actually be trying to care. It's difficult to tell the difference, but ways for that money to channel into making your kinds of things work in a really powerful way, in a way that doesn't compromise your integrity. So if that seems good, like I'm certainly happy to try to make change or funnel, you know, figure out what kinds of strings I can pull to get money funneled. But yeah, I don't know. It feels quite complicated, but I think we can all work together somehow.
So we will take these two last questions.
Okay. Michaela Louis.
Or comments.
Quite a simple question. Why was the option of one year online and one year just local, considering that it appears it will be the lowest cost overall alternative now considered? And maybe the local one could also have some sort of social event, maybe a dinner, it's impossible, but some kind of social event to promote a bit more mixing and people, meeting people that they don't know across lines that normally don't fall. Thank you.
Yeah, to that, I have to say that in-person conferences, hybrid conferences is a broad spectrum, like cases such as this one, where we try to create an online experience that is as close as possible to the in-person experience. And there are other conferences that offer like an in-person experience that is like, is the main experience and you can attend online, but you will not have the same experience. And there is a broad spectrum between these to choose from. Okay, two last ones, please.
Hi, I'm Yanhua and I'm working as a student volunteer here. And before I apply, I actually don't know about anything about the fact, but yeah. Capping for the Emily, capping for the Emily's comment. Oh my gosh, it's so nervous, sorry. Yeah. Thanks to the keynote and the tutorials and the other paper presentation. It's really honored to listen to those really good, great works. And then I'm really thanks to the passion about the other organizers and the volunteers. Yeah. All right. Yeah, hopefully I can come here as like a student volunteer next year or someday I can present some papers on the fact. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I just want to very briefly make a point, which I don't really understand. So I was not aware that FACT had rejected money from Google and accepted money from DeepMind. I would just challenge the committee that I think that's morally incoherent on some level. And like, it would be nice to have some level of like consistency. Like I'm not, I don't necessarily know what the right choice is there. I would just like, it's really weird to do that. It's like super, it like doesn't make any sense. So.
Thank you. That's where we are working on a sponsorship policy, basically. Thanks, it's already six. I don't know, Seth, if you want to close, but from my side, I thank you very much for coming here, for your scholarship, for the passion, curiosity and all this energy and the hard work I did for preparing a conference during working the entire year. And I hope you enjoy the rest of your stay and have a safe trip back home. Thank you very much. And I hope you enjoy the rest of your stay and have a safe trip back home. Thank you very much.
Student volunteers, swag.